All right, I will call the September Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Thank everyone for attending, a very busy agenda today. Starting at 11:00 AM, after our board meeting, there will be a public hearing for the 2020 annual plan, which because of the COVID we had to postpone, which usually happens back in March. Because of the safety protocols in place due to the COVID pandemic, including limitations on public gatherings and social distancing, today's public hearing will take place over the BoardNet virtual platform. Kim Thomas, our Housing Program Director, will give an overview and presentation on the annual plan public hearing process. And then we will be talking about, if there are public comments, whether you're on the phone, press star three. If you're on your computer, see the message box on your screen. And we'll go over that again as we get closer to the public hearing. Additionally, over the past couple of weeks, there have been a number of significant criminal events within our communities. The increase in crime is a major concern to all of us. And today, we as commissioners will voice our concerns and possible strategies going forward. To help us gain a better understanding of natures of these events, we will be talking with Sergeant Dixon and Chief Boone. Unfortunately, due to prior commitments, they could not make today's meeting. However, they are tentatively scheduled to appear at our October meeting. So therefore, I invite your comments, if any, on the meetings from the August 13th Board of Commissioners meeting. Any comments, commissioners?
I have a couple. First one is, and maybe there'll be room to report this. Very, very, you know, I had a meeting with the safety, Public Health Safety Team on, was it last Friday or, I think it was last Friday, yeah. And, and we, we think we had achieved a, at least a partial strategy that will help improve, broaden the stakeholder, that's what my comments to the team were. And they were very receptive and even in attempting some things that had been done in the past, one of the things I shared with the team was, give me the report now, anyway. I'll wait until it comes to me, but we had a good meeting. I thought it was a very good meeting. And we had some good ideas, some of which I discussed with my partner Suzanne. We had another commitment, and wasn't at the meeting, but when I briefed her, I told her what we were trying to do. And then I also discussed it later with Joe Dillard, who I was gonna try to solicit his help and putting a message in his ear. So I'll be a little bit. And then the other thing I want to say is, I think our executive director had some, a family situation that really challenged him. I think it was relative to your sister, wasn't it, Ron? And just, I don't know if we have publicly said, I know that board members have certainly expressed their heartfelt extended feelings toward you and your family. And so on behalf of those of us that hadn't weighed in yet, I just wanted you to know that we are here to fully support you and your family. And we all know the things that are critically important in life and it began right in that initial circle of people that we come into the world with. So bless you and so you go forward, whatever the commissioner and your family, we're praying for you.
Other comment? Yes, Ron?
I would like to thank Ron and Donald because we've had some challenging things come up this month with our communities. And they have addressed somewhere, one of the, remember, one of the residents just couldn't get in her place. And it was, it was a true or die situation, it needed to be done. And he moved forward on it that same day, and that same shoes in her place. And I want to thank you all for doing that extremely.
Any other comments on the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
A second?
Second.
Barnes?
Robert.
Arlington.
Hi.
Ms. Perea.
Mr. Benassi.
Aye.
Mr. Dillard.
Aye.
Mr. Masach.
Aye. Okay, well then we'll move on next to the executive director's comments.
The warning commissioners, I had just a couple of updates. On the last meeting, I had updates to all. It was before we actually had the, got the program off the ground. That was the CARES relief, or Housing Cost Relief Program that we had received money from the city, that they had received from the, they're part of the CARES Act, and that was money that we were direct to citizens of Norfolk with certain incomes. There was income requirement, like $98,000 for sole owner, $198,000 for combined. They had, property had been in Norfolk, they couldn't also be receiving any other assistance that would provide housing assistance. So we started that program August 31. That first day, we had received 79 applications for housing assistance. Over the next couple of days, it was up to 247 applications. And these are all online. We had our, we had a really good team of folks that worked to really meet the deadline, make sure the applications were accessible online. We did a lot of marketing, had a lot of information out on our website. So as of yesterday, we had 375 applications. Now, we haven't gotten to the point of actually being able to approve any yet. So we want to be able to, hopefully be able to report out how many applications we can be able to prove and how much actual funds of the $2 million in this first phase that's available. We want to be able to report that out. But as of yesterday, around 10, we had 375 applications. We had about 4,500 paid views. I know there have been a number of impressions that we've had on social media. So there just appears to be a lot of interest in the program. And our goal is to act, to make sure that we get the money out as soon as possible. I know it was a lot more important, because at that time, the only sort of, we had a number of moratorium eviction, convictions on moratorium, I'm sorry, moratorium on evictions since the, since March. And at the time, I think the last one that was in effect was the state one, which ended the 7th. But as of the 1st of September, the CDC had passed the, there's a, imposed a moratorium eviction from September 1 through the end of the year. And so that, the basis of that being that if evictions were allowed to proceed, then it would help spread or increase the spread of the coronavirus. So it was basically based upon a public health situation. Why they, why they imposed this federal CDC moratorium on evictions. And the same, same thing applies, it doesn't absolve anyone's responsibility for paying rent. One of the things that they did, that they did do is they provided what they called it, it's like a declaration that each resident, that this applies to the same, I mentioned that the same income category applies, and when I talk about the CARES, and also for the stimulus payment, the sole owner, $98,000 to $198,000. It's that, this applies to those families. So there's a declaration that the CDC put in place. And basically, the resident, family, they have to attest to a number of items. For example, as it says, it says that you, as the, as the resident, you've used your best efforts to obtain all available government assistance for housing. And there's another bullet, which talks about the income guidelines. You have to test that you meet the income guidelines. And that, you also have to say that you're unable to pay full rent or make full housing payment due to substantial loss because of the coronavirus. You've used your best efforts to make, even if you, even if it's partial payments, you've done, made your best effort to do that. And you've also have to attest to the fact that if evicted, you will become homeless. And then the last thing being that they understand that once this period ends, which would be December 31, 2020, that the landlord or mortgage company, whether they have the right to pursue whatever means they have to, to obtain whatever balance of rent or mortgage that has, that hasn't been paid.
So Ron, you expect any more applicants?
Excuse me?
You expect any more applicants beyond 375?
Yes. Yeah, we, we expect a little. I mean, it was, I think it, we did, we may have seen the peak. We anticipated when we started the program that we'd be able to help about 128 families, just based upon some of the local data in terms of the, like the jobless claims and things like that. We thought, but it, it appears that there's a lot more need out there. And we're, we're expecting to go through this first phase and that possibly there may be, there may be a second phase as well.
Well, this, the amount of applicants divided by the $2 million bucks, about $5,000 bucks per, that can cover a lot of rent.
Yeah, it can cover.
That can do a lot of good.
Yeah.
Unless the pool is too big.
Right. So we, between, between that, the rent, mortgage, or utilities also. So I think we'll go through that pretty quickly.
Okay.
And the most important thing that, even for our residents, we just want to make sure that, just because of moratoriums in place that keep on relaxing. I know in our case, we're not imposing any late fees or things like that. But I think under the CDC, moratorium, mortgage, or still assess those type of fees. But as a housing authority, we're choosing not to do that. So, but anyway, Mike Clark's gonna be giving more of an overview on, on the program. But I just wanted to give you an update as to where we are in terms of the metrics of the program. One of the, another update that I wanted to bring to your attention is the retreat. I know we had talked about having a retreat for the past couple of months. And I'd like to thank Kathy Mosley, our chairman director. She was able to obtain Dr. Janice Sanchez for, for a retreat logistics. And I'll just give you, well, before I start, I'll just give you a background for y'all that know her, because I know a couple of commissioners that had the opportunity to be in retreats that she facilitated. But Dr. Sanchez is a, she's a retired professor of psychology at ODU, Ole Miss University. She has a private practice, teaches lectures on African-American mental health issues. She's also taught undergraduate, graduate courses related to clinical psychology, personality development, psychology, psychology of women, African-American psychology, psychodynamic care. So what, in terms of the logistics, what we're looking at is October. And now these sessions are gonna have to be in person. So we, we thought that maybe two, three hours at the most sessions would work. And what, what I was gonna do is have Phyllis reach out to y'all and see what dates, two dates would work in, in October. So that'll probably be, I know Phyllis is off, so it'll probably be in the early part of next week, she'll reach out to y'all and talk about, try to solidify a couple of days. And that, and that's initially, there may be some, you know, some follow-up with that, but that's what we're looking at, October.
Okay, I think that'll be fine.
Okay, that'll be, okay. And, and also, there will, there will be some information that will be forthcoming from Dr. Sanchez and information from me in terms of, I think some things that'll help facilitate the discussion more especially if we start talking about the organization, the profile of the organization, you know, some information that'll help in terms of how your dialogue and some of your decisions will help impact the organization. So we'll make sure that you have that information before we actually go into the retreat. The last thing I just wanted to talk about that I think Don and Alfonso talked, touched on was the increase in crime that we've experienced. I know that, I talked, I know I specifically talked with, with Rose from a number of cases about that. And we talked about some of the things that we probably, as an organization, need to do in terms of, I know that, you know, with COVID, it's kind of hard, you know, ordinarily under circumstances, at least what I'm accustomed to when you have situations, you have spite and crime, it's always good to be able to go out. You have like neighborhood watch meetings and sort of remind the residents that, hey, you know, we can't be everywhere at once, but you guys are gonna have to help us in terms of, you know, letting us know what's going on in the community, sort of report things so that we could at least direct our attention to certain things that are going on that we may not be aware of. And also, I think that we have an obligation in terms of communicating, especially, you know, we have gun owners and things within our community. And just from some of the significant events that I've sent out, you can see that these are sort of this ordinary disputes that are being settled by using, using guns.
Is it, is it permissible for one of our residents to own a gun?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Is that federal law?
Yeah. I won't vote against that. I won't vote against that.
Yeah, they, I mean, they, because we had our security officer Karen, Karen talk about who went to, you know, going to, I guess there've been altercations and their, their residents and others walking around, you know, with weapons that they could, you know, they could, that they're visible.
But in the past, we've had this situation come up, right? And historically, they're happening in our neighborhoods, but it aren't our residents. Like what happened to Hunter's scare and the little girl, which kind of, the person that pulled that trigger was not on Hunter's way. They're looking for them now, but if we have to watch our messaging, if we keep telling this board that it is our residents, when it's people coming from, trying to beat it on our neighborhood.
Yes, some of these, but like some of these, some of these domestic things that we hear about that within, within our units, some of them are residents. Now, I don't know about, I know that, I think Rose had mentioned something to me about the one shooting, things of Lexington Heights. I think she had mentioned to me that some possible connection between our, our, our gangs in that particular situation. But, but I know that they have, you're right, there, there are some have been outside, but then there's also some within our communities. Not said just the domestic disputes, though. We had talked about possibly sending out communications in terms of for the ones that have, that are going home in our community, that we talk about more recently. Really, a lot of it comes down to even just being able to handle domestic situations, disputes and things like that. And just not ordinarily, not automatically jumping to, you know, resolving disputes using weapons or even violence. Yes.
So Ron, I'm still trying to understand. I knew that you had to have a gun, if you had a gun, and show, you had to have a license for it. So really now, you don't?
You still, you still have to have a license for it.
You still have a, well, it depends on the situation, Ms. Arrington, but there is a right to have guns. Now, some people chose to have licenses to conceal carry, which is a different situation. I'm not aware of the specifics in the situations that we've experienced recently. But generally speaking, yes, our residents, it's like any American citizen, a resident in the United States, have the right for the Constitution to bear arms.
You can't load, but they can bear arms.
Did I read where the city of Richmond just passed city ordinance? It says that you cannot have a gun on city property to include sidewalks? That was just passed this week?
That's for everyone. What we're doing, what I think should, how to consider this conversation, we're talking about a sector of people, mainly for African-Americans, and trying to disarm them. What Richmond did was, the city says, you can't have a gun on our property at all. Like the city of Norfolk, when they say, you can't bring a gun in this city council if you're Ken Benasi, Joe Dillard, or President of the United States. That's totally different. We're saying, okay, if you're on our property and you can't have weapons. You know, I, I think what Rose said, you're talking about open carry. And that's open carry, you don't need to like, whatsoever. I think that's a fine line. As a board, you just need to be conscious of the fine line of alarming and disarming the citizens that we serve, and get really much, really quick.
I think there's a lot of things going on here, a lot of things going on. But the real problem is the gangs. And just like Don said, we need to really get someone to come in and talk about it so we'll know what's going on right now. We don't know what gang, because I know one gang has been, got a lot of gangs in Calvera and Young, and they have been coming back and school. But we need someone to come in and really talk to us about it. So we don't know where we're going, but right now, we don't know where we're going. We just know there's gangs out there. And they may have taken over. They're in the middle of this.
I agree with you 100%. And I think Chief Boone coming in next month is gonna help us out. This, this has always been an issue in God's thinking in our community. And one thing that I think other than, oh, let's take the guns out of the community. I think you, Bones, gonna share some statistics. You gotta remember the guy that was shot in downtown Norfolk, throwing a gun on the roof, Isaiah Swift. The day before, it was video of him walking in Superior Pond and having a straw purchase. And that's the issue. Can you go to buy a gun right now on Young's party? I'm getting $500, Ken. There's no repercussions, repercussions for with the bottom guns, for selling you a gun and coming outside handing. That's where we're gonna really focus on something. And I think Bones, he comes here, he's gonna talk about that. It's not necessarily guns and the gangs and those, the access to those, you know, so.
I'll make one more comment. Ron, Rose, one of the things that I was very adamant with our safety team is, we have to find a way to get the community to be an equal partner in this. Because it does nothing for us if, when things do happen, we can't get support from the people who live there. And so having the community as a stakeholder, the same way we are, same way the community needs to hold us accountable. We need to find a way to bring the community in as stakeholders. So that, because that's where the critical information is gathered. I mean, above and beyond who's got what, because if I have a concealed weapon and walk on the property, I didn't do as much damage if I have bad intentions. And so oftentimes, the community knows who is walking around with concealed weapons. Am I right?
Yes.
And so we, we really need to get the community on board as a stakeholder and, and, and have them appreciate that together. We're gonna, we're gonna bring this puppy home. So.
Yes, okay. Okay, yes.
Okay, commissioner, comments? Again, I do think it's important that we make sure that we do have that meeting next month with the chief and Sergeant Dixon. Because it is getting to a very noticeable level way above what you would anticipate just in a city this size. So it's very important. And I also know that Chief Boone is very metric oriented as far as putting out his resources. And so that's what we need to really talk to him about, is having that particular piece, as Alfonso and Rose have said, and others, having that piece not be the only thing that happens. Enforcement isn't the only thing. But again, I think we'll, we'll have that discussion in October. Other comments, commissioners? All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to, also, if you have your agenda here with the page numbers on it, it'll be on page 19, which will have, I'll call up Michael Clark to talk to us about resolution for the Church of God in Christ High Route part. Michael? Do you need a hot mic?
Our bond counsel is presenting that.
Oh, okay. Kevin White, Ben?
Yeah, this is Kevin White. If, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for not being able to be there in person today. You have before you a final approving resolution for the bond financing of the Kojak Memorial Home for the Elderly. Previously, we've held a public hearing with the authority on June 25. And the authority provided initial approval to the, the conduit issuer for the, for the developer in the home. And now we are closer to closing. We have, the borrower has a term sheet with Cedar Rapid Bank and Trust, which will purchase the bonds. And we have a bond financing agreement that's in the process of being negotiated. Your counsel, Delphine Carnes, and her partners have been active in reviewing and commenting on the documents. So we feel it's appropriate at this time for final approval of the transaction. We believe it will close within the next 60 days. The resolution just would authorize your officers to sign final agreements that have been approved by your counsel and, you know, assist with facilitating the closing. Again, the, the resolution, similar to the inducement resolution that was passed previously, specifies that the bonds are not an obligation of the city or the authority, but they're passed through obligations of the borrower and that the authority has no liability for payment of service. Available to answer any questions you may have? Thank you for listening. Would appreciate if you would consider approving the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Again, you can see the resolution itself. And then the actual wording that Kevin has talked about with the, I see exactly what the key is, and. Delphine, any comments?
Um, no, sir. Again, this is a pass-through or conduit issuance. There is no liability to the housing authority or the city of Norfolk for the repayment of the bonds. Actually, this is beneficial to the authority in a number of ways. Of course, you're receiving an annual fee for your role as the issuer of the bond. And this also promotes the renovation of the Kojak Apartments, which is beneficial to the city of Norfolk and very consistent with the mission of the housing authorities.
The comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. A second?
A second.
Ms. Carnes?
Mr. Albert?
I have staying.
Ms. Harrington?
Aye.
Ms. Perea?
Aye.
Mr. Benasi?
Aye.
Mr. Dillard?
Aye.
Mr. Masach?
Aye. Ready, thank you. Now again, we'll look, I guess, Michael, you gonna do a consolidation?
Yes, good morning very much.
Good morning. And that will be on page 25.
Good morning again, commissioners. We're here to talk about the Resolution Authorizing Amendment Number Three to the capital budget for the COVID relief program. Our executive director pretty much said everything I was gonna say, so I'll just touch on a few things. We are actually in, as Ron said, there are two phases. We're actually in phase one now. That utilizes the $2 million, that's gonna utilize $2 million from the Commonwealth. The actual cutoff, it started, Ron mentioned it started on the 31st. The application cutoff, the deadline for receiving. The application cutoff, the deadline for receiving new applications is actually on September thirteenth. Um, if someone has an application in by the thirteenth, but they don't have all their documents, you have up until the twentieth to get those in. The goal is to spend all of that money by the thirtieth. As far as the application count, I mean, they're, they're still coming in daily. The first couple of days, it was a peak, but we're still averaging anywhere from ten to fifteen new applications a day. I would anticipate by the end of the day, if we're not there already, we're, we're over four hundred applications. So I, I, we're moving good on that. And, um, I'll just take a moment to say, I'd like to thank communications and IT for getting the word out. I don't know if any of you saw LaShawn Forts on, um, the Coast Live yesterday, but.
I did.
Good.
She did a great job.
Yes, she did. And so I'd like to give a shout out to her for getting the word out. And also Rebecca Burr, who was very instrumental in working with LaShawn. And she is now, as far as getting the application processed. And actually the lady right, right out there at the desk, Elaine, she's working on the applications too. So we're, we're trying to get to that first closing. Uh, admittedly, some of the applications are coming in somewhat piecemeal, but that's somewhat to be expected. So again, the first round is in place now. And we have to be expended by, uh, the thirtieth of, uh, December. Phase two, which there is a phase two, that's actually starts, um, January fourth. And very similar to phase one, they both address housing needs, whether it's rent, mortgage, utilities. But in addition, in all form for phase two, the difference is if, because it's CD money that's utilized in phase two, that taps, that brings you into the, um, area median income guidelines. So you're not necessarily, uh, hitting the same, uh, income group. The, the key to it though is, uh, seventy percent of the applicants have to be at eighty or under area median income, but thirty percent can be in the eighty to one-twenty. So we're still capturing a lot of people in that. And, uh, the needles most likely still be there at that time. Um, the resolution that we're bringing to you today is authorizing an increase of three million, three hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars, which is actually the two million, that two million for phase one and also the additional monies for phase two. And we're hoping that you adopt the resolution. Any, any additional questions or?
Michael?
Yes?
Um, is there, uh, admin?
Yes, that's covered.
Allowance in there as well for that time?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Ms. Carnes?
Mr. Albert?
I, I am staying, but I need to clarify this. My, uh, laptop can't get the internet. I couldn't download it. I have made it a practice my entire public life that anything I have to hold on authorized, I have to read thoroughly since I can't read it out of state.
Okay, thank you for that.
Ms. Harrington? Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. Bernasi?
Aye.
Mr. Dillard?
One question.
Yes, sir.
If I'm active, I'll be so. Do I stay or can I vote?
No, you can still vote for me.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think the chair and I spoke earlier this morning. He was going to allow me to do the, uh, development activities report now and if there are any questions. But I did want to highlight one thing in your.
That's, excuse me, Mike, that's on, starts on page thirty-seven?
I did want to highlight that we, uh, and I think I said Commissioner Bernasi and also Commissioner Gretchen was not here. A brief, uh, heads up that we did put out the Ocean View infill RFP. And that's, we are reviewing now, uh, nine, uh, submissions for the nine lots. In the update, I mentioned that our land sales projection, we figured about six hundred and fifty thousand. When I did this, that was the number. Looking at it again yesterday, we're looking at about seven hundred and forty-five thousand worth of land sale proceeds coming in. So I just wanted to mention that. Uh, were any other questions?
Is there, is there any, uh, deductions out of that or is that just cash flow coming in?
That's cash flow coming in, that's.
Just again, were there requests on all of the properties?
Oh, yes, yes, sir.
Okay, on each and every one?
Yes, sir. We'll get rid of every lot in that RFP.
Excellent, thank you, Mike.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, no, thank you. Yeah. All right, then I'll move on to page twenty-eight. Your book and then ask Nat to come on.
Good morning, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, good, good morning. The, uh, issue in question is a resolution to authorize, uh, five hundred thousand dollars to support improvements to the Cityview Tower, which is the five fifty-five East Main Building. NRHA has been in occupancy for a little over four years now. And we've been owners of the building for approximately two and a half years. When we, shortly after we closed on the property in March of twenty eighteen, we undertook, uh, about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of immediate, uh, repairs that were mostly code and safety related items. So for instance, the, uh, automatic doors at the front of the building for access into our client services space. Uh, lots of accessibility and bathrooms that were not handicapped accessible. Uh, putting extra, uh, protection on the handrails for the fire stairs. So they met current code. Uh, and when that work was complete, we started on, uh, what, what we called the phase two work, which was designed for additional items that had been identified in, in the due diligence process, uh, that were more extensive, uh, less urgent, but still important. And, uh, our consulting architects completed that work about a year ago. It came with an estimate of about two and a half million dollars. And at the time, we were already experiencing a higher than anticipated vacancy rate in the building. Uh, so that has reduced available funds for improvements. And we were told at the time by Mr. Konak to prioritize items and limit the spending to five hundred thousand dollars. That was authorized by you all, uh, last February. Uh, and then a month later, the, the world changed. So I, I regret to say that we did not succeed in expending any of that, uh, in the past fiscal year. So this is really a request to reauthorize the five hundred thousand dollars to complete the most urgent of these repairs, uh, as soon as we can and, and certainly in the upcoming year. Uh, most of you are on site, so, uh, you are probably very familiar with what, what's the, the biggest piece of this is repairs to the garage floor slabs, which have a lot of divots, rusted rebar has displaced concrete and, and created some, uh, divots and, and holes in the slab. That is a very important item to correct. Uh, and we do have bids for that right now. Uh, and there are other items in the garage. And then, as I said, some, some miscellaneous things like electrical and mechanical system repairs. And we would limit expenditures to the five hundred thousand dollars. Let me stop there and I'm happy to take any specific questions.
Questions, comments? Okay, then, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Hello?
A second?
Mr. Albert?
I am staying.
Ms. Harrington? Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. Bernasi?
Aye.
Mr. Dillard?
Aye.
Mr. Musacchio?
Aye.
Nat, I don't know if you heard my last comment, but I'm abstaining not because I don't, uh, like the idea of the resolution. I just can't read it because I don't have.
Yes, sir.
My, have not been able to download it. So, uh, you know, I know you get too upset with New York City. They don't.
Ron, what, what time, at what point should we discuss our discussions yesterday?
This is probably, this is probably a good time to talk about. Some, we had, uh, had a discussion yesterday, uh, looking at, looking at the long-term, uh, of the property. Well, first addressing some of the short-term things, which involve the rents, but then looking at the sort of the long-term plan of the, uh, of this property, which, uh, really was probably, uh, like him has brought up, that was, uh, part of John's long-term plan for the building was the use of, uh, historic tax credits to help reposition the property. Uh, so those are some of the things we had, we had talked about, uh, to come up with some ideas that to be able to present to the board. I think that that's probably the more, probably more, uh, practical approach in terms of repositioning the property. I was going to try to get some preliminary information on the long-term, uh, terms of positioning the property. And, uh, and that's pretty much what.
Yeah, let me make a couple of comments. First of all, my data says our vacancy rate is thirty-seven percent in this building. And I'm not sure which one is which, but it is, uh, that's not good. That is by far the worst in any building in town, uh, downtown. Um, I think we're able, I think Ron's been able to uncover a few things that take some of this thing out of this, whereas we were probably miscalculating the rents that we were allowed to charge. It's complicated as, as, as Asian arithmetic, but it's.
It involves charging because we have, we have our public housing and, and section eight operations programs in this building. And, you know, all housing authorities, they don't own their buildings and they usually rent. So the government puts a, they put regulations on how much rent can be charged to these programs. And like I said, that most housing authorities don't, they usually in the building. And most of the housing authorities have been, we've been in the building with other tenants. And so there's only a certain, certain limit on the kinds of rent. You can't charge these programs for profit. So you can only charge for cost. So.
Yeah, I don't run it up. Yes, and, and, and what, what Ron's saying is a formula that the government forces us to use is based around our expenses.
Yeah.
Well, we were making a mistake. We weren't using the most, largest expense we had, which was interest. And Ron has rectified that. And why does that mean anything? Cause it's, it's all coming in and out of our pocket. It's, it's, we're chewing up reserves by any shortages we have. And we're not able to charge back the program, various programs. So this is getting accounting back on a better foot.
Yeah, then I was going to say, uh, what that also does is money that would be going out, uh, to somebody else with no return now comes back. But you all know, I live in the nonprofit world. And space is at a premium. Uh, and nonprofits, some of the ones that are not necessarily huge, uh, are looking for a space that's centralized downtown, especially for their, uh, home office operations. Not necessarily, you know, outreach in the field work. And I think there's a market out there that we may not be tapping into. I could be wrong, it's not my field, it's your field, but, but, uh, I think that there's a market that we're not capturing, six, three percent occupancy rate is horrendous. Can't, you can't even buy a soda pop and not be in.
And we're, we're taking a look at, uh, I didn't reach out to the city just to let them know, you know, if they're. Cause they're, you know, as much as they're expanding and they have operations throughout, you know, different parts of the city. So I, I did approach them on that if there's any opportunities. There, we also looking at, you know, we're looking at other things, maybe, uh, in terms of, maybe we need a more forceful representation in terms of attracting tenants. So we're, we're looking at everything.
No, 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 I wasn't suggesting, when I, all I'm saying is.
Oh, yeah.
That, that, uh, and I got the management company, is the problem for the marketing company?
No, it's.
It's on us?
No, there was two, there's two separate companies.
So you have to hire a marketing company, that is.
Well, we have a marketing company, but, but lots of review all that.
No, 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 I'm asking functionally, who, who, who does that?
Well, I think Jones Langlosal is your leasing agent and.
I think we have your.
Is your.
Property manager.
Property manager.
Okay, so, so. So the reason I said that is because like our second chances office are in City Hall. And we paid rent for the last four or five months and not been able to get into the building. I mean, the staff can go in, they said, well, your staff can come in, so they got ideas, but they can't turn a cloud on the bay. You know, I mean, they can do, take management from anywhere. And so, uh, I, I just, I just wanted to let you know that maybe a market out there that if even if it was just one floor, uh, you know, for.
Well, please know, this is a very big item in our budget. And what Ron, and unfortunately Ron does have some experience with this historic tax credit program. This is very, very lucrative, potentially, however, we have a long runway to get there. And so we've got to watch the, the monies that we're spending on this building. We got to do it parsimoniously. And we have to, and Ron, there's some specifics here. I would tell you that when we look at historic tax spreads, structural stuff is not a qualifying expense. So we ought to be spending money like on concrete repairs now. Because it is, it's, it's the non-structural stuff or property acquisition that is qualifiable expense. So there's a real science to doing this.
I'm putting my money on can, aren't I?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's it. Yesterday.
Yeah, don't put it through this, I bet.
Yeah, there's things we need to take up currently, working out the rent situation, which gets into this whole, uh, whole thing with the debt coverage ratio. So there's a, a number of things that we are, we are addressing those. And that could be part of the larger discussion we have with the long-term.
Yeah, and I've asked Ron to put together kind of a table and maybe our next meeting. Cause this is really complicated stuff, but it's big, big money. And I want you to see where the impacts are and what the planning is and the impacts.
Yeah.
Good, good. We'll put it on the agenda.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Other comments? All right, then I'll ask, uh, Steve Morales to talk to us about the return policy, which is on page thirty. Steve?
Good morning, board members. Yes, uh, good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Right, uh, so before the board today is a resolution to adopt the return policy for the CNI project. This return policy really memorializes the Tidewater residents' right to return. Uh, the policy will apply to Tidewater residents that were lease compliant as of February twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, and who remain lease compliant, um, throughout their, their relocation. Um, the right of return is, is, is going to be accomplished by providing a first preference to the new replacement unit, um, um, and then also a first preference to the affordable Y-Tech only unit. For the replacement unit, that preference will remain in place for five years, um, once it's, it's constructed. Um, and for the Y-Tech units, that first preference remains in place for the first lease-up. Um, just to note that this policy that's being, uh, put forth is, uh, exceeds the HUD standards that are put in, uh, that are in this CNI program. Um, and so, uh, that's pretty good. Um, and, and we do recommend that the, the board approve this resolution. Any questions?
Hi, Steven Suzanne. I have a, I guess a comment. First, I'm delighted to see this. I think that memorializing this does put some meat on the bones of what we've been, I think, trying to say all along. My concern, and this is just is a challenge for all of us, is that I know that I see here that one of the disqualifying events for this preference is eviction or the being, you know, part of stipulation agreement facing eviction, which I think makes our efforts to work with Tidewater Garden residents during this moratorium even more critical. I mean, because the way I see this, if a moratorium lifts and we have to begin to evict folks, they lose this, they lose this significant benefit. So I think it just makes our work in trying to explain all that to residents more critical.
Thanks for your keen eye on that, I missed that.
Yeah, I'd say absolutely concur, and that is, that is correct. Eviction is a disqualifier. Urban Strategies, which are working with the residents, they have, working with the authority in the city, they've actually established some eviction protocols essentially to, to address those issues. So I agree with you Suzanne, the, the critical thing is that there's a number of families and there are lots of, I'd say, you know, red flag items that come up where USI and authority staff are able to work with those families. I, I don't know if it will prevent all evictions. In some cases, you know, the, you know, residents, you know, do get evicted for, for various things. That one, no matter how much work we do with them, they, they still seem to go down that path. But other than that, absolutely concur. It's a critical time for us to work with the families and USI is doing that.
Thank you. Can, is there a timeline to this, Steve?
I'm sorry, I said it one time?
Is there a deadline to this?
A deadline for the return policy as in to get it approved. Certainly. I mean, we are getting it in place now and, you know, as we anticipate starting construction next year and then lease up in another, within, within two years, that we certainly want to have it in place through that, for that process.
Okay, I'm asking because I think Suzanne brings up a good point and I do have questions of the return. Like, if we could both approve this, could we pass this by for this meeting and work through the HCB and Suzanne and, and others to make sure that this is exactly what we want it to be? Because I hear what you're saying about USI and the return on evictions, but I've also seen letters in the community right now from the property manager, the director of property management, that don't, the language in those letters don't correlate with what you're saying in this resolution. So I would like to make sure that all of that is like cohesive, so we won't have that situation come up when it comes to evictions and it's this finite detail. Let's just put it in what we have right now in this resolution to have it on record.
Okay.
So if I have to make a motion, I would like to make a motion that we put this off until the next board meeting.
Yeah.
Does it require a motion? Oh, it does, okay, that's fine. I mean, I was going to say, if it doesn't require a motion, that's fine, but if it requires.
I couldn't hear all of Mr. Dillard's comments, but I may understand incorrectly that you want more specificity with, with USI and NRHA property managers work with residents and to, and to table this resolution for one month?
Yes.
There's no need for a motion, we can, if, if the board and the chair is agreeable to changing the agenda, we can just move. Does anybody object to tabling the resolution for one month?
No, I'll go one step further than, as I'm looking at it, I've already seen two seriously problematic things in the return policy for me. So I'm all for putting it all out. I mean, I've seen two very serious issues for me.
The Housing Choice Voucher Committee?
Yeah.
So we do, okay.
Yeah.
Alfonso, you're welcome to send the Housing Choice Voucher Committee. We welcome you, an invitation.
Does that make it a public meeting?
It's a public meeting.
And if you leave compliant, I mean, if I pick one ground outside, you're not lease compliant. So anything, if you have.
Well, again, the key is that there are, we want to make sure that we have an answer for the 9,000 questions that are going to come up, not just from us, but from residents, from litigants, from everybody who's got their own narrative about what's going on here.
Yeah, the point I was making, or Delphine said here, for me, this issue, we can't be vague. So we have to be very specific about the expectation of the residents. And when we just use the term like lease compliant.
Again, it may, it may take some more, you know, what that means and that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think.
I agree with Delphine that said too, like her letter that she had to put out in the community. We can capture all of that in, in this resolution.
That's right.
To help, to add communication.
That's right.
And support any of this information that's out there. We can both approve.
All right, well, let's, let's, let's have the committee do its work. So we will table this issue of, until the, until the October lead. Okay?
Good work, Steve, we just want more of it.
The reward for good work.
Good work.
Thanks, Steve.
If I could, I'd, I'd actually like to make one more comment and this has nothing to do with the return criteria. I just wanted to update the board. We did put in the packet a, a board update regarding community engagement and those sessions were held last week. But more importantly, we are getting a very good response online as well as even in, in person, some, some surveys turned in. So one, a big, big kudos to the city and NRHA teams that worked on getting the word out. There was a good piece on channel 13 last night. This is for the community engagement for blocks 17 and 18. So again, just really kudos to everybody who worked on that. And I think we're going to have some really good responses back. So I just wanted to do a quick update to the board on that because we did have that in the packet.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, and let's go ahead and look at, there's nothing else, page 38, which is the finance. Issues. Did I look at, did I miss one? Oh, any comments on the development activities report? Michael, did you have anything?
Yeah, you want to look up?
No, I'm just.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, we're good. All right, then, page 38. Request for proposals, cash advances, receivable. Virginia, anything, you got anything for us?
Anything, you know, the money, the money's coming in. We had a little challenge with the jobs plus money. We were pending a reprogramming. That reprogramming has since been approved and is in locks and our accounting staff is in the process of drawing down that 524,000. So we're well under our $4 million authorization for cash, cash advances. But I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anything? Just to give you a quick update, there was some concern last month when we had to write off some advances that we had made. And we were, talked to Virginia. Alfonso and I actually met with James Rogers and Greg Patrick, I think it's his name, to talk about, A, moving forward, how do we become a little more systematic in, A, what we're advancing the money for and what is the risk or the opportunity for, to be paid back? So the city agreed to put together some language that they thought, you know, what do you call it, MOU or contract or whatever, moving forward. And they're going to send that to us to be reviewed by our council. So that we understand in the future that if they say, we want you to advance the money for this, we're going to pay it back, here's the accounting number where the money is, or we want you to advance the money and wink, wink, we'll pay you back someday. We have a determination of whether we want to take that risk on or not. So that's moving forward. On the other end, there is quite a bit of money that's still outstanding. And the agreement that we have with the city is that Virginia and Greg Patrick are going to sit down and go through each one of the items to make sure that there's an understanding of how and when and if those things are going to be paid back.
Don, is that, is that beyond what we wrote off last month?
Yes, there's about an ish, around $2 million still, still out there. And so just going, wanting to make sure that both parties understand what each other, you know, some of these the city has said, we can't pay you. And, you know, we need to have a better understanding of the risk as we, obviously as we move forward. And then what is the risk for this money that's still outstanding?
He acknowledged at least a million and a half, I think, that he, but the main one that he said there was no dispute about.
Uh, there was a number, yeah.
I know it was over a million, I know that, yeah.
But again, that's what Virginia and Mr. Patrick are going to hassle out. That's why Virginia gets the extra dollars.
Well, that's great, a million one, but let's.
No, I.
Well, I mean, I know that that's the price, I think we're, it was a big gap. And I think you mentioned a number, 3 million or better.
Yeah.
And, and he was saying, well, I know they're this, and I, I could, I could be totally wrong about, I know it's over a million, but, but he said they could talk through the other stuff. And a part of it was, I think, Don, help me if I'm wrong, but I think a part of it was some of the costs that we qualified as necessary to deliver various programs, I think, may have been disputable. I think, kind of what he was saying, some of the administrative costs associated with some programs, something like that. I think it's what, that's a piece of it, that's not all of it, but, but, but he did acknowledge, you know, some money.
Well, I think it's great that you put it on the table and that we're going to work on a process and we're just not a roll over and play dead and wink, wink the whole lot.
And again, in, in the past, the lack of these, what I call an MOU, I mean, I'm sure there's a different name for it, but a clear understanding other than a handshake in the past, which, which worked for many, many years. And now we just, we need something a little more systematic, so.
Very good.
But that's just to let you know that, that we, we heard you and we, Alfonso and I have been working.
Great.
With the city. Yes, Roe?
I don't know if it sounds crazy, but if they owe a million or two, they got land, why don't just give you the land? If they owe that much money, say, well, we give you this property and that is up.
You got money to do.
I, I think as soon as you become one more than half a council, you can make that happen. And again, I think part of this, and there's, there's a realism that COVID has hit the city just like it's hit us and hit everybody else. So while we understand that, we still want a better understanding of this amount and then what do we do when we move in the future? But we, we can certainly, that can, I'm sure Virginia heard, heard you and she can put that on the table if that's what we got going. Any, anything else for Virginia, finance? All right, thank you, Virginia.
Thank you so much. And I'll bring an update to the Budget and Finance Committee as we work with Greg and the city on those receivables.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, Kim?
You're lurking.
It's, it's way too early to start this process. I mean, because it says 11 and it's only 10.
So this is, this is just an overview to you as the board as to what we should anticipate for 11 o'clock.
Okay, great.
Um, so we're not going to go through the full PowerPoint presentation. And where are my southern manners? Good morning, everyone. We will not go through the full PowerPoint presentation. We will defer that and hold that off until 11. But just to talk through the process for the sake of the board meeting, we will convene our public hearing today for the annual and five year plan for Norfolk redevelopment and housing authority. This will take us, this plan will take us through June, we think, June 2025. That asterisk is because we've actually, because of the delay in the waiver that was issued by HUD for the annual plan process, we would normally submit the annual plan in April. It would become effective July 1st. Since we did not submit the annual plan in April of this year, our current plan, the plan that was approved last year, last July, is actually going to play out until December of this year. The plan that we are reviewing today will actually become into effect on January 1st, 2021. So it has shifted the period by which our annual plan will cover. Not every housing authority has the same coverage date. So we, Norfolk was one that was July 1st, June 30th of each year. As the annual plan period will now shift to a full calendar year, January 1st, hopefully through December 31st. So the end date on this plan for the five year portion may take us through, actually, December 2025. We're waiting on more details from HUD to specify on the five year plan side how long this will be enacted. Just a few things to call out and point out in this process which makes a little unique. Again, it is a virtual public hearing where we will solicit comments from the callers who call in. We will have, we have had since July 27th, a method by which residents and citizens could submit comments to me directly through email as well as a dedicated phone line to receive recorded comments to be included, included in the plan. As of today, I have not received any emails and we have not received any calls on the dedicated call line. So it will be interesting to see what the public hearing, the voice portion of the public hearing today yields to us. And the public comment period will remain open until the close of business tomorrow, September the 11th. That gives us about 47 days technically, we always add in a couple of days extra. But we will continue to receive comments through the close of business tomorrow. It is important to point out that again, this is both an annual and a five year plan, which means this plan needs to be inclusive of anything that we aspire to do as an organization over the next five years. This is something that I have been working with staff a lot to massage the understanding that if it's not included in our annual and five year plan, we can't approach it without issuing a significant amendment. And significant amendments have become a little more challenging the last couple of years. It still requires the same process of public hearing, going to the resident advisory board, convening a public meeting, et cetera, et cetera. But we have seen that our field office has been a little less than responsive to our public, our significant amendments. So I am trying to pack this plan with as much as I possibly can in this first and initial go around. If there are some inevitable things that happen that we have to switch it up or update certain policies, then of course we do that. But for the sake of working with staff, I have impressed upon them that we need to put any and everything in this plan that we have an inkling that we want to accomplish. Yes, sir.
Kim, as an example, we're talking about potentially repositioning this building.
Right.
2026 or something like that. Is that the type of thing that needs to be in an annual plan? And we're, we're way ahead, so we're not blind on that one. But next year, should we be putting that in an annual plan?
So we can talk about it as being something that we intend to do as a business practice. It's more of a business practice, it's not necessarily something that has to be part of this annual plan because it doesn't directly relate to the residents that we serve.
Okay, so this is more policy oriented as opposed to a business?
Yes, so this would be a policy document. I give the example, there's a portion of the annual plan that talks specifically about the capital fund money. And in capital fund, we look at individual communities and what we propose we're going to do in the community. So we need to know the minutia in terms of how much. So we need to know the minutia in terms of how much it's going to cost. But in the plan overall, we may just come up with an inflated number. But it's best for us to have an inflated number than no number at all. Yes. So at 11:00, we will begin the public hearing process. Again, I'm just anxious, I'm more, it's like, I feel like this is my first day. But I'm so anxious just to see how this process is going to work. Because I think with or without COVID, it's time for us to even look at some alternative methods of convening these types of meetings and how we communicate and engage with our constituents. So if there are any, yes, ma'am?
So along those lines, Kim, the process, I guess, of the public hearing, the bones is still the same as before. Whoever kind of calls in or makes comments, identifies themselves, gives an address, you know, because that's part of the public record that we usually have, you know. And then we've had this conversation before, and I see it noted in your excellent briefing, that should, should there be issues raised that are just inaccurate?
Yes.
That we will have the ability to correct or clarify these issues?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Now, and that, you know, through our chair and then directing staff, however, we, that's.
Yes. So they, in the slide that we'll actually go through at 11, there actually is a slide that talks about order of events in that the board will be assembled to hear public comments and reactions. But dialogue, your dialogue and comments will only occur if you feel that a comment is erroneously false, misleading or otherwise harmful to today's proceedings or the mission of the agency. I know in years past, there have been some things that were said during the public comment period. We did not correct them in the moment that they were said and it kind of snowballed into bigger issues as we went along. So with the, under the advisement of the chairperson of your board of this commission, we have agreed that if there are statements or comments or reactions that are made that just need to be corrected to purify and preserve the sanctity of what we're trying to do as an agency, that as board members, you will have the ability to do so.
And that's actually, whatever it is.
Yeah, I see it on the slide.
52 on the slide. No, then that, it'll be read to the folks.
Excellent.
Yes.
Thanks, Rob.
So we will have the transcriptionists who will come in and transcribe all of the public comments today. We'll also, if there are any comments that are received via email or on the phone line, those comments will also be transcribed as part of the annual plan process, the submission. We then, I then go back to those comments and try to provide an answer as it relates to the actual plan itself. In some cases, we get, you know, those one off that's, "My light bulb isn't fixed outside of my door," that kind of thing. So we have blanket answers that basically said that we will, as an agency, address all maintenance issues, et cetera. But what we are looking for today are comments specifically around this, this document. And hopefully, we can maintain the integrity of the process and have folks who actually comment based on what the document has or doesn't have. And that also gives us enough time to fix anything, go back, reconfigure, recalibrate, as this document is not due to be submitted to HUD until October 18th, which is basically 75 days before January 1st, the date that it's expected to go into action. Okay, any further questions, comments?
Thank you, Kim.
All right, thank you.
Don, we have time to get an update on our process regarding delinquent tenant payments and what we discussed the last meeting. We get feedback from Donna Mills on that.
I think so, Donna, are you there?
Been working with the property manager staff since the last meeting. And they have put forth more of an effort in communicating with the residents. But Brian, if you can give more specifics to the commissioners, please?
Yes, good morning. How's everyone doing? Like Donna said, we are putting forth more efforts. The managers are actually, will be knocking on doors. Again, you know, we know that sending letters, you know, we've been sending letters over the past several months, getting residents to come in to talk about their delinquency and where they are. Also, we're getting the Resident Services coordinators involved and speaking with residents, you know, if they have any financial issues regarding paying their rent. So these are the, these are the efforts that, and we, these, and these will continue to be ongoing efforts, month in and month out, you know, reaching out to the residents. And again, you know, we think that knocking on doors, if residents are not available, we're leaving door knockers just to ask them that we visited the apartment and would they please contact the office to discuss a very important matter, which is regarding their rent. Like I stated, this, this will be ongoing.
I don't want to be a micromanager here, but are we documenting this level of contact? And what would you call it, Don?
Well, despite our efforts, we're at a point where that kind of thing. So again, I think our concern is that January 2nd, there will be a big push back from people who, if you couldn't pay in March, April, May, June, July, August, September, October, November, December, to have all that come down on you on January is going to be very disheartening. So what, what our concern is, we want to be able to say that we took every possible effort that's available, either through help with the person, working with them on repayment plans and all of that, before we get to the point where we have to say, "You got to go."
And DeShawn made that point yesterday on TV. I saw her and she was saying, is it DeShawn or my? Yeah.
LaShaw.
DeShawn, yeah. She made that point on TV yesterday that, even though we had, she was talking about a fund to help people with their rent. But she was also saying that they want people to know you're responsible for your rent. This thing is going to come due at some point.
Well, that's part of the communication strategy, just exactly what you're talking about, but.
So people don't forget, confuse forgiveness with this putting it off or stalling. So this isn't forgiveness. This means you owe it to me, but you don't owe it to me right now. But I can tell you the.
There's abuse to people who have the money now.
But again, even if I don't have the money, this is going to be really something in January. So again, we need to make sure that we take it every effort to find avenues to avoid this. But I think there are going to be those situations where despite everything, we're going to have to have some eviction. Yes, Rose?
I think also to cover our, to cover NRG back, when the managers go out, whatever contact they make with the person, I think they should have a list in front of their folder and check it off. And so that whenever it comes back, you could say, "Well, we did this, we did that on this date and this time." So we can cover ourselves too.
If I, if I may, if I may, we have, we have created such a checklist. Would a manager, would a manager, we'll be documenting their efforts with regards to any communication with the residents and efforts that we take. So we will have that as, as documentation of the efforts that we, that we are attempting.
That's great.
And this effort just gets amplified because the stakes are so high for the St. Paul's quadrant folks. They, if they get behind in this rent and they're, they're evicted, they're facing, I mean, as long as they're on a payment plan or keeping up with the payment plan, they'll be all right. But they start, you know, this eviction process, they lose all the benefits of that guaranteed return. I mean, and no matter, I mean, that, that would be tragic. It'd be tragic for them, it would be tragic for us, tragic for the community as a whole. So I have a much greater sense of urgency around trying to do everything we can to get those caught up.
I mean, even if we have to incentivize it in some way, because if we weigh the cost of eviction compared to incentivizing it, maybe it's a discount or something.
You're right, Rob.
To get, because it's going to cost.
You gotta be careful about moral hazard on that. You gotta, you can never put that in writing. You've got to handle that one-on-one, but.
If I can interject, this is Donna, so I just want to make a couple comments. So to Suzanne's comment, we are working very closely with USI as it relates to the Todd Water Gardens residents. We have stated since all of this occurred that we are going to allow long-term repayment agreements. And so USI gets a report every time we do the age receivables report from finance. So they are well aware of all the residents in Todd Water Gardens who have delinquency concerns. And they're reaching out to them along with the staff to make sure that we're, one, finding out the situation with the family and doing whatever we can to assist them. So we are putting forth as much effort as we can to work with the families. This is also being done in the other communities. It's just being done by the manager and the resident service specialist in those communities. But we have USI assisting us in Todd Water Gardens with that. We are seeing for the month of August, we did see kind of a leveling off of the delinquency amount. It's been growing every month. It's still not where we want it to be. It's high, but it's kind of leveled off from July to August. So we're hoping that we're going to start seeing that level off and, and start to decline. But I'll have a better idea when we get the numbers for September and can share that with you next month.
All righty, thank you very much. Let's go on then to new business. Is there any new business?
I have a comment I'd like to ask Donna. Well, I've got the, better to ask the board chair. And Donna, I'd like your thoughts on, is there, is there a possibility of getting a briefing or an update from our staff, Donna particularly, and her team, on the USI-NRG relationship, lessons learned? Any good, bad, and ugly? Just not bringing USI, but just having the staff share with us, you know, the things that they, what that relationship has been like? Is that out of school? Is that something?
No, I think Donna, let's talk about that, exactly what that's going to look like.
I mean, I know it'll be a couple of months from now, but.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Donna, what do you think of, if you prefer not to, I, you know, I just.
Yes, we can definitely do that. We have been working with USI because they have started drafting a, a report mechanism so that they can share where they're at since they started efforts in the community. But we can definitely work to put something together, possibly even by October. But let me check with some staff and see if that will be doable. If not, we'll do it in November.
Yeah, I don't want to, you know, the intent is for the question, whether to get a report on what they were doing, but to get a sort of a understanding of what you're feeling about what they're doing.
Right. I was going to do both, Alfonso.
Okay.
Any new business? Then we'll move on to the committee reports. Any, any comments on those, folks?
BCB was meeting on Tuesday, but after we talked about the resolution. I know it's just a ceremonial, I still think we can utilize it. So we're going to switch that date. Donna's working with her staff to see which date that's going to be. It's already a public meeting. So if you guys want to call in and weigh in as well, we'll make sure that you do that information.
Okay, great, great. Housing and safety?
I think I exhausted everything about it. Donna, unless you wanted to add something about the meeting? I don't know if you heard me, but I just, I kind of preempted this agenda and started talking about our meeting last Friday. So I do share with them that my high concern was trying to get the community to be a third stakeholder. I did talk to Suzanne and Joe, I mean, yeah, Suzanne and Joe, about what I shared, I was briefing Suzanne as the co-chair of safety and asking Joe to help me put that message in the community, Donna. And they both were very, very receptive to what I had to say. And I think we can shake your strategy around us going in there.
And I agree with everything you said, Mr. Albert. You know, we're working internally, trying to figure out best practices in dealing with some of the issues that have been brought up. So the meeting with Mr. Albert last week, I thought was very helpful. And it gives us some better direction on ways to move forward in addressing some of the safety concerns. So other than that, I think the minutes for the committee meeting, there was some updates in there on the Diggs Town construction schedule. So just want to highlight those. If you get a chance to look at those, it'll give you an update on where we're at with the schedule out there.
Thank you, Donna. Joe, you have something?
And I, I don't want this to be misconstrued because crime is crime. I think Alfonso and Suzanne do a good job with that committee. But we possibly in the next future months segregate it though and show which residents, when we're talking about crime, I would like to know the percentage of residents that are all in the crime. If we're talking about someone.
Pushing outside.
Versus non-residents. Give us more clarity than I would. Even when we're talking about messages, it gives us more clarity.
That's right. And help us to focus like a laser on the right area.
Donna, can you work with Karen Rose on that?
Yeah, sure.
Trying to let us differentiate between residential involvement versus non-residential involvement? Because I think Karen has done that some.
Yeah, she has.
But, you know, had a really nice report over the last several months.
I've given everyone a write email. She says, she says it. She says this is non-resident, just more than data as far as hotel.
Okay.
Yes, we can definitely pull that together.
Thanks, Donna. And then the Budget and Finance Committee?
Well, we talked about the big issue and Ron's on that. And so we're going to, I think, more, more to follow on that, that issue.
Okay, great. Well, then that seems to be where we are. I guess I don't close this meeting. Ms. Karen?
Yes, sir. Do you adjourn this, this part of the meeting? And then we will wait until 11:00 AM.
And then do I have to reopen it?
Yes, we will formally open.
Just tell me what I've got to do.
For right now, if we are done with this particular agenda, then we would adjourn the regular board meeting and everybody would take a break and not discuss any NRG business until we convene at 11:00.
About five till, but we have to go through the, can you hear me? And all that stuff. All right, so based upon that advice, I will call the September Board of Commissioners meeting to a close. Thank you very much.